We have a Rotary meeting with a special session we all know about. Get a chance to get to know our candidates for Mill Valley City Council. Our program chair, Bob Canova, is going to introduce the League of Women Voters who will run the program. And candidates, when the moderator is ready, she will call you to the table so you can have a few more bites. Bob?
As a courtesy to our candidates, please silence your cell phones. Good afternoon, thank you for joining us for today's Mill Valley City Council Candidate Forum. Today's event is being moderated by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. This year, the League of Women Voters will celebrate 100 years following a vision to empower voters and defend democracy. Hosting and moderating candidate forums is an important part of their vision, democracy, where every citizen has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the competence to participate. The League is a strictly nonpartisan organization that never supports or opposes individual candidates or political parties. Unauthorized videos are not allowed because the FCC requires that the forum must be edited and must be broadcast in its entirety either live or reasonably soon after it takes place. The League wants to ensure that information is not manipulated to create false or misleading impressions. No candidate should be allowed to use or edit the footage for campaign purposes. We encourage our audience to submit questions on the index cards that you will find on the tables. Because of time concerns, we won't be able to probably get to all of the questions. If you have a question you want to submit, please raise your hand, I'll come by and get to the question person from the League of Women Voters. I want to introduce League member Susan Stumpf will be our moderator here, she's already up on the stage. So please join me in welcoming and thanking the League of Women Voters for their support today and for the five candidates who are present today that are running for City Mill Valley City Council.
Oh, and thank you for coming to this candidate's meeting. It's moderated by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'm Susan Stumpf of the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and I'll be your moderator. With me are League members Nancy -- our questions orders Nancy Weber and Linda Silla. The timekeeper is Nancy Bell, and she's sitting in the front with her trusty signs to give the candidates warnings as to when their time is approaching the end, like one minute, 30 seconds, and then stop. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. In addition to promoting voter education, the League participates in advocacy on issues and may take position on some issues that arise in ballot measures. In order to ensure impartiality, the League policy that candidate forum team members not live in the voting jurisdiction the candidates represent, nor can they be actively involved in a candidate's campaign. The candidates could come up to the podium now if you are ready. I would like to briefly explain the roles of the timekeeper and the questions orders. To assure everyone stays within the allotted time, our timekeeper is sitting right in front of where you'll be sitting, and she has signs that she will show you telling you how much time you have left. So keep an eye on her when you are speaker. If you're in the middle of a sentence when the stop sign comes up, you can finish your sentence, you don't have to quit back quickly. I want to assure you that the questions orders do not send your questions, but rather they screen the questions to avoid duplication and anything that's inappropriate. If you do not recognize your question, it might be combined with other questions on the same topic. Please note that Community Media Center -- There's five candidates running for three seats on the Mill Valley City Council for a four-year term. The candidates are with us today are Urban Carmel, Kurt Nauer, Sasha Mackenty, Tricia Osa, and Max Paray. There is also an open seat to fulfill a two-year term on the council. Jim Wickham, who is running unopposed for the seat, is not with us today. Before we get started, a quick review of a few ground rules. If you haven't done so already, take a minute to silence your cellphone or any other noise-making devices you're hearing. Strictly nonpartisan organization, the following and following Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums. No campaign material, including buttons, signs, brochures, t-shirts, et cetera, are permitted in the auditorium. Each candidate has been invited to make a one-minute opening statement. After that, the candidates will each have one and a half minutes to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to questions. For opening statements, we'll begin with Urban Carmel, and go down the road in the order in which they are seated. Urban?
So I'm Urban Carmel. We moved here in 1999. I raised two children here, they went to all the public schools, and graduated. We moved to Mill Valley from Indonesia. I was the president of the Union Bank of Switzerland in Indonesia, and before that I was a senior consultant with McGinty and Company in Hong Kong and in Australia. Since moving to Mill Valley, I've been the chair of the Planning Commission, which is my current role. I've been on the Planning Commission for four years. Ten years ago, I was involved in restarting the Mill Valley Library Foundation. I served several years as the president. I spent six years with the Mill Valley School System Site Council, including a term as president, and I spent a decade with the Mill Valley Soccer Club, including seven years as a commissioner for the Rec Committee. Thank you.
Kurt? My name is Kurt Nauer. Greetings. I came before you about four years ago as your Parks and Rec Commissioner, and 146 votes short of serving on your city council in that election. So a month after that, I came to the Rotary and I gave this response. I encouraged each and every Rotarian to take it out there and run for elected office if they could, because it's such a great honor. Seeing that I had no takers, here I am again. Justing aside, it was with a little bit of courage, some trepidation, and a great deal of encouragement that I'm running again, looking to serve Mill Valley with five priorities in mind. Find the best city manager possible. Two, continue our line of fiscal prudence. Three, emergency preparedness with a hard focus on -- thank you. With a hard focus on recovery and evacuation, and then fiscal, fighting up for our local control as a community. Sorry, this is --
Thank you. Sasha?
Hello, Rotarians. It's nice to see you all again. I'm Sasha Mackenty, and I am the incumbent in this election. I'm currently serving as your vice mayor. And I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish in the last four years. We've completed infrastructure projects like Miller Avenue, I just had a lovely compliment about Miller Avenue at my table earlier, the skate park, the boat dock, the pedestrian bridge, there are a lot of infrastructure projects that we worked on. In addition, we reduced our retiree healthcare burden, we put aside money for pensions, we completely just approved a long-range, ten-year long-range financial plan, and we just approved also adding three new firefighters. So I would like to continue the work that I have started so far on the council. I am also doing a lot of work in the county on, I've been the co-chair of the Marin County Council of Emergency Council Members Disaster Preparedness Subcommittee. I serve as our liaison to the school board and worked on the Yellow Bus Program. There's a lot of work I'd like to continue, and I hope to have a chance to do that in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia?
Hello, my name is Tricia Osa, and thank you to the Rotary Club for hosting this and to the Women's League Voters for moderating this. It's very exciting. I've lived here in Mill Valley for 22 years, and I care greatly about this community. My work within the city, since I'm currently in my second term with the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and then my third year as being elected to chair. We've accomplished many things in the last three years, one of them being working on evacuation maps that were out to all the residents. Evacuation is a great concern to us. We've also implemented a Neighbors Helping Neighbors program. It's a pilot program, but Neighbors Knowing Neighbors is helping neighbors in emergency and non-emergency, and also chair of the Mill Valley Community Emergency Response Team. Thank you.
Thank you. Max?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. Thank you to the Rotary and to the League of Women Voters. My name is Max Paray. My grandparents moved to Mill Valley in 1960, and I grew up in Mill Valley during the Dave Fromer's soccer summer camps, doing the dipsey. Graduated from Tam High, and came before you at that time, actually, and the Mill Valley Rotary gave me a scholarship to go to UC Santa Cruz. After college, I attended UC Santa Cruz's, after UC, sorry. After UC Santa Cruz, I attended London School of Economics. Returning to Mill Valley five years ago, I've served as chair of the Sierra Club Marine Group, co-chair of Sustainable Mill Valley. I currently serve on the Mill Valley's Emergency Preparedness Commission, and it's an honor to run for city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, Jim Wickham is not able to join us today, but he's asked me to read this opening statement for him, he says. Hello, Rotarians and Mill Valley residents. The Rotary Club has a special place here in Mill Valley, and I regret my work schedule conflicted with today's forum. I spent 37 years working for Mill Valley Police Department, raising a family, and volunteering hundreds of hours in youth sports, schools, and community events, including bringing the Mill Valley Carnival to Memorial Weekend. On September 10th, 2019, I spoke to you about the state of the city. Since then, we have added three new firefighters, moved the Depot Cafe forward, developed a 10-year strategic plan, and began the recruitment for a new city manager. I've recognized the importance of working closely with the community and fellow council members to reach our goals to preserve the character and charm that makes Mill Valley unique. My institutional knowledge will best serve Mill Valley. I ask for your vote for the short term, the two-year term election. Thank you, Jim Wickham. Now for the questions. We'll start with Kurt Nauer, and the question is, everyone claims they are for more affordable workforce housing, but few suggest specific locations. Specifically, where within the city limits of Mill Valley do you propose locating new multi-unit affordable housing?
Thank you for the question. I see this as a question for the community. One of the sites from an advisory housing committee here in Mill Valley has proposed the very lot outside as one of the possible places for affordable housing. I take this from a different perspective, having developed the strategic plan for an East Bay nonprofit for affordable housing, that's building the Victory Village in Fairfax, and the priorities are location. Mill Valley has very few locations left. Two, finding the financing. And three, the political will. So while the question is addressing location, it's a difficult one, and something that will require either the donation of land, and by land, I don't refer to open spaces, I don't want that to be confused with those pristine places that must be retained and preserved, but the possibility of small locations. And I look at the field outside, I don't see that as one of the locations, but I think this is a community decision, and when it comes to the docket, or when Affordable Housing, the Affordable Housing Committee that we have for the city, or the HOC committees locating places, we need to seriously consider them.
Thank you. Sasha?
Thank you for the question. So as far as locations, the process is that the city puts together a housing element every 10 years where we identify sex. So that has already been done from the state perspective. From a practical perspective, I think there are a couple of different ways to look at it. I'd like to think about expanding that frame a little bit. I think the way that we are conceiving of housing is changing. We're moving into a more life-cycle housing type of perspective. There are more people in town who are putting ADUs on their property so that multiple generations can live on the same property. People's kids and their families are moving back in. That's something that we need to think about, just the idea of the single-family home is not necessarily the way that people are going to be living in the future. In addition, there's discussion of workforce housing and teacher housing. Actually, just moments ago, I had a conversation with two Rotarians here about potential space for teacher housing. Phil Richardson is very interested in some housing on his site. So I think there are opportunities with ADUs and with considering life-cycle housing and thinking of different ways of thinking about housing to be able to meet our affordable housing needs in the future.
Thank you. Tricia?
So I just got the honor of sitting next to Phil Richardson, who, you and I were just talking about some of his plans for his property. And the idea of having the formal housing, having six units for seniors, six units for city employees is fantastic. I totally encourage that, and so I think his property here on the corner across the street from us would be a great location under that. It challenges, so I'd like to flesh that out a little bit more. I also am a proponent of ADUs. Those come in different forms. These can be people with large homes, that have sectioned off of the home, separate entrance, kitchen, et cetera. Those could go to family members, could go to seniors, but I would encourage ADUs. And another location, I'm not quite sure yet in the city, I need to do a little more research about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Max?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Absolutely supportive of ADUs, but they are at the beginning, they're not at the end. And I think the question is about possible sites for a multi-unit. I think that the site where the Methodist Church is over by the middle school has been looked at. Homer Bound, which is a fantastic local nonprofit that helps people get out of homelessness and get out of poverty, has looked at that site. They're currently working on projects in Nevada. Once those are done, they're going to choose either that site or San Anselmo, and we need to have supporters of choosing this site, because I think that would be an excellent location. Thanks.
Thank you. Urban?
Hi. So thank you. So two parts to the answer to this question. So the Planning Commission that I chair has already started the process of developing affordable housing. So, and this is good news. Good news is that last year, we did 20 accessory dwelling units. These are affordable by design, and we, these are dispersed throughout our community. And we are on pace now to do about 200 accessory dwelling units over the next 10 years, and you can't do that number of units in any other way, certainly not through a multi-unit development. Mill Valley's been really unsuccessful at doing multi-unit affordable housing. The last one that we did was Pickleweed, and that was 34 years ago. Pickleweed is across the street from the high school. So we've been really unsuccessful at pursuing that strategy. However, we have a general plan, and in the general plan, we've identified location for multi-unit housing, and those are on main transit areas, right? So the idea of affordable housing is that it's housing with less cars, it's people that can take mass transit, and that should be located along Miller Avenue. That's what the general plan says. And the other location is Lightdale from Camino Alto out to 101. That's the other area where we've designated, that's appropriate for multi-unit affordable housing. And that makes sense. That's an area where you can apply density, and it's an area where people can grab mass transit and go to wherever their job is, and that's the right location for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Sasha first, and the question is, the greatest threat to life and property in Marin is wildland fire. What specific new steps, no generalities, please, will you pursue to mitigate this hazard and protect our families?
We have, and we and Marin are head and shoulders above other parts of the state in disaster preparedness and wildfire preparedness specifically. And I have gone to multiple conferences in Sacramento, and gone up to Paradise, and visited the side of the San Diego Fire, talked to Napa County supervisors. The lessons learned that they have are often things that we've been doing for decades. One of the things that Napa County said is, oh, we needed to have a group of nonprofits that are already involved in the community that we could reach out to and have as part of our communication work. That's called a VOAD, Volunteer Organizations Active in a Disaster. We've already had that for decades, and that group has recently been rejuvenated. We have a community wildfire protection plan that maps out the fire signs where the likely fires are supposed to happen. So I think on a jurisdictional level, we're on a path, we're doing all the things we need to do. The next part of it is preparing our families and neighborhoods, and Tricia alluded to that with the neighborhood response groups. I think that is our next frontier, is as a city supporting the neighborhood response groups, because a connected neighborhood is a resilient neighborhood.
Thank you. Tricia?
So Mill Valley's head and shoulders above the lot of the county as well. I think we've done a really fantastic job, especially the last three years. The unpopular vegetation ordinance passed, and I'm very happy that that passed. I think the council made the right decision on taking out the three-foot rule. Yeah, that's still forcing fuel reduction, I think that's very important. As I mentioned before, it's part of the five different neighborhood maps for evacuation routes. It's all about planning, education, and practicing. Muscle members who live part this, every family needs to have a plan for evacuation and for sheltering in place. The maps that I mentioned show primary, secondary evacuation routes, as well as community refuges. And one of the things that in Mill Valley, a community refuge area, because evacuation does not mean you get to 101. Evacuation means get out of harm's way. So if we can have everybody have a plan and a practice on how to get you and your family and your neighbors to these community refuge areas, that's extremely important.
Thank you. Max?
Yeah, at a macro level, as has been alluded to, we've done a lot, right? We've mapped out where fires could potentially come from, we've looked at different scenarios, and I think that now it's really getting at the granular level, right? What is this neighborhood going to do? So as I was saying, we've done a lot at the macro level, and now it's time to get granular. It's time to look into neighborhoods and say, you know, West Lightdale Canyon, Cascade, Alto Sato, you know, do you know where to go in times of disaster? And as Tricia said, you know, it's not necessarily going to 101, right? We have to let folks know where in their neighborhood they can walk or bike to be there in times of safety, so that then maybe a bus could come and take them out, or maybe they could then get out in an orderly fashion. So I think that that's really the next step, is doing the neighborhood response groups and ensuring that everyone knows where to go.
Thank you, Urban.
Yep, so we have the benefit of having a really excellent emergency response team in Mill Valley. They've done excellent planning, it's really down to execution now. There are a couple of things that need to happen. Number one, you need to provide funding for it, because taking out vegetation is really expensive. If you have 1,000 homes and each one requires $1,000, that's $1 million right there. So this is going to take a lot of money, and we need to come up with a mechanism for funding this. Number two, if you want to think about new ideas for preventing fires in Mill Valley, the wooie building code was implemented in 2008. Most homes in Mill Valley, probably 90% of them, were built before 2008. That means that they're not fire-hardened, so you need to be fire-hardening those buildings. An ember shower will burn down a non-wooie home whether or not it's got a three-foot barrier around it or not. So the most important thing is fire-hardening those homes. That means closing vents, closing all points of ingress. And then the next thing that needs to really happen is a disaster recovery plan. We don't have a disaster recovery plan. So we need to evaluate what happened, for example, in Paradise, what happened afterwards? Because after the fires come through, you need to be able to get services back up for the people that are here. You need to be able to carry on the town afterwards, and that work needs to take place so that we can continue as a community after the disaster has taken place. Thank you. Oh, and I'll say one last thing. Vote for Measure C, because Measure C takes out the vegetation between Mill Valley and all the other communities, and that's an important part of the response. Thanks.
Thank you.
I can tie your tag directly onto that comment, fires don't discriminate. We put a great deal of focus on vegetation management. In fact, we had a very good vegetation management ordinance or code in place prior to the discussion last year, and the great disconnect with this three-foot hardscaping. Our focus needs to be as a community now, and this is something that came back in 2015 during the election cycle, that is organizing neighborhood by neighborhood, and Trish and Sasha have both alluded to this. Neighborhood resource groups are critical, and captains in those groups to get people out from the canyons. We are not ready, our protocols are not in place for evacuation. There was a hiccup on December 16th with one lane closed on Almonte or Tam Junction. Our town shut down. We have two corridors. Those corridors are going to shut down. We need to have protocols in place, because we have seven firefighters, as good as they are, and maybe two floor cops on duty at any given time. We're not ready, and we need to work with our neighboring municipalities and the county to get ready, because we don't need a paradise in Mill Valley. Sorry.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Tricia first. The city and the county's unfunded pension deficit is consuming ever more money each year to pay down the multimillion-dollar unfunded debt. Pension reform at the state level is stalled. What steps will you commit to take as a council member to address these debts, and how will change the city involvement in the present public employee pension system?
So the CalPERS that we're responsible for right now is --
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Is at $4 million. That is going to double in the next eight years, and it's something that we will have to deal with in the city budget. We've talked a lot about this, and we're going to have to find the funding for it. It does have to be addressed. The percentage is pretty steep in the first year, I believe it's about 23% increase, and then the percentages go down, but the money continues to go up. So we'll have to be looking for revenue to pay for that. There are several different proposals of budget cuts, but we need to dive a little deeper into that. We know the Cur Council has already done a lot of work on that, so I need to learn how to continue their hard work in finding that money.
Thank you. Max?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think right now, we're in an okay spot, but in the years ahead, it's going to be something that we're really going to have to get on top of. Council member John McCauley has served on a subcommittee of the larger group of mayors and council members for all 11 jurisdictions in Marin, and that subcommittee, with other members from other councils, came up with a series of recommendations. And the first is just to acknowledge that number one, it's an issue, and number two, some of it's just beyond our control, because we're in the CalPERS system, which is controlled at the state level. So part of it is pressuring the state to give more flexibilities to the municipalities. We also have more ability to influence on the OPEB side, right? So the retiree health benefits and less on the pension, so we can make some changes there. But ultimately, this is something that the community is going to have to be involved in, especially if we're talking about either tax increases or service cuts, or cuts in any way for future retirees, for future workers. Thanks.
Urban?
Yeah, so the city has really done an excellent job of managing the finances. So we have now, for the first time, a 10-year plan, and that 10-year plan shows exactly what our pension obligations are going to be over the next 10 years. And so the good news is we have a plan, and the bad news is that that plan shows that our obligations are doubling over the next 10 years. The good news after that is that that becomes the peak, right? So if you think of it as a curve, it looks like this, and that's a beneficial thing, right? In other words, it's not going to continue to escalate upwards. So that means that we can address the situation by reducing the pension obligations for all new employees, and so that allows us to, whenever we get new employees, not further increase our obligations in the future. We can also reduce our obligations to other employment benefits that employees get, so that we don't increase those liabilities also in the future. There's not much else we can do, since those are obligations that we've already agreed to with existing employees, so there's no way of reducing those. We can only reduce the ones for new employees going forward. We can, if we need to, find room in our by-do-bye doing pension obligation bonds. Pension obligation bonds are perfectly suited to a situation like this, because it does have a modal curve to it, and allows you to lop off the top of that curve, push have a modal curve to it, and allows you to lop off the top of that curve, push it out to the future, allows you to, who, continue to fund things in the current day, and push those expenses out further in the future. But the good news is that we are on the path. The bad news is that we do have very little room left to increase our expenditures for other things outside of pensions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to think what to add to that. We are in a pinch. 70% of our general fund budget goes to our labor costs, open conference and Congress, and that's going to grow. There's no if or buts about it, how we get out of this. And I'm happy for the rosy picture in that 10 years out, it's not going to work as ugly, but I don't see that as the short-term solution. Mill Valley has two choices. Either we have to increase our revenues, and that's new taxes and other, or make cuts in the short term to meet our obligations, or go further in debt, or cut our commitments to remaining physically responsible, that is, a zero, no-debt budget. So we have our challenges ahead of us, and we, as a city, are going to have to make some hard choices in the next three to five years.
Thank you. The next question will be...
Do I get to answer that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Sasha, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. So that is a great question. There's a lot there. John McCauley and I served on that OPEB pension subcommittee for the county together. The city has already done quite a bit. We have closed our OPEB pool, so we are no longer offering retiree healthcare to new employees, so that's a closed pool, so that's not going to be increasing. We cannot change the benefits that current employees receive with our promise to them. That's the California rule. You cannot change, even though benefits have not been earned yet, you can't change those. Until that changes, there's nothing we can do about that. We have also put the money away for increasing pensions. We looked at doing the 115 trust, and it looked like it would just, it would take the very tip bit off the peak, the peak off the curve, but it wouldn't really have enough of an impact. So we've just added three firefighters, that adds to our burden, but we found the money. We're going to be, we projected in our 10-year long-term financial plan, we're going to have to not give more than 2% raises over the next few years. Then all the department heads have submitted for the latest two-year budget, 2% cuts across the board. Everybody's going to be looking at ways to tighten the belt. Then the next thing we need to do is have a community conversation about what the community wants, and the tough choices that, for the tough choices that we have to make. The community together has to make that decision.
Thank you, Sasha. Max, you will be answering this one first. Will you make the politically difficult improvements required to actually improve traffic, such as creating roundabouts, opening Hamilton Drive, widening East Manor at CBS, eliminating parking between Park School and Camino Alto, and traffic on Blithdale?
Guess I got the easy question. The answer is yes. I will absolutely, you know, go out on a political limb when I think that something's in the best interest of the town. I don't support opening Hamilton Drive, but I do support other stronger measures that I think we can take. I think that we can look at widening East Blithdale. That's something that's been looked at for decades. I think that now that we've taken a number of the smaller measures, which have a noticeable impact, like synchronizing the lights and addressing school traffic with the school bus program, both of which I absolutely support, I think we can look at the larger measures now. Also support pressuring Caltrans to have a dedicated lane going south on 101, a dedicated lane going north, improving bicycle and pedestrian paths, and just really having a culture in our town of having people get out of their cars and encourage service and contractor vehicles to come at non-peak hours. I think with all of that, I think we can really address this issue.
Thank you. Urban?
Yes, so traffic is one of these issues that never seems to go away. We had this problem 35 years ago as well, so it's high time that we commit to it. The problem is, in Mill Valley, we drive an average of 11, do 11 trips per day per household. Our streets are designed for six. That's why we've got a traffic problem. And the national average is nine, so we drive about 15% more than the national average. So fundamental problem is that we drive too much, and we need to change our behavior. And we need to change our behavior by putting in more bike lanes. Bike lanes that take us to all the schools from various parts of town. That's how you reduce the amount of traffic in Mill Valley. 60% of the kids that go to Edmond McGuire are driven, 50% of the kids that go to Old Mill School are driven. So we need to drive less, we need to get around in other ways more. Roundabouts are a fantastic solution. And I'm happy to say that the next traffic report is going to basically looking at roundabouts at Camino Alto and Blithdale, at Road Moris and Blithdale. And roundabouts reduce delays by 60%, they reduce greenhouse gases by 40%, and they reduce accidents by 40%. So they're a fantastic solution for increasing throughput, increasing safety, and also being very green. I think there's a great opportunity to reduce the amount of parking between downtown and park, because that's an area where you can get kids to school along that way, and there are places for those cars to go. It's very difficult to reduce traffic from park down to Camino Alto, because there's no other place to put those cars, and that road is very narrow, so there's not really great opportunities to do that. However, I do think there's an opportunity to have parking overnight, but not parking during the day, so that you can have bike lanes during the day from like 7:30 to like 4 o'clock. Thank you. That wasn't worth the effort.
Thank you. Kurt?
I'm not going to dispute the stats, but I'm not sure of those stats of the number of trips per day by family. That said, the traffic problem, and I'm stepping in, Molton Peters now pulling out my prop that we're not going to have, but this is a mirror, and I'm facing that mirror towards you, because that is still the problem, as he alluded to, Urban Carmel. You know, this is a, this is a problem that's been ongoing forever. We've come to, we've made small measures with the yellow bus program, the changes to Miller Avenue, but the community is changing. I can't tell you how many families I see on their bikes. The Nowro family, for example, isn't buying another car. Our next purchase will be an e-bike, because the single combustion engine is dead, and that will change traffic patterns in the years to come. And we have a community that's evolving towards those changes.
Thank you. Sasha?
Our family for, did, for a number of years lived with one car and an e-bike, so it can be done. Urban is right that the East Blithdale design does contemplate some roundabouts, so that's in there. The Traffic Conjection Reduction Task Force that completed its work under Mayor Ken Wachtel did look at all this. The goal is to meet 2013 levels of traffic. So there is an actual, physical, tangible goal that we're trying to meet. And had a number of very specific measures we could do, one of which was the yellow school bus program. Emily O'Horn and I have worked tirelessly on that program together for the last several years, and Emily is now potentially bringing in Tam High into that fold, too. So Tam High is going to be moving their bell timeout later in the next couple of years, which will contribute even greater to the traffic. So that's something that we really need to do. Will I make the tough choices? Hamilton is something, Tampa in two ways, something that we looked at, the traffic engineers actually don't recommend that, because it's not, it wouldn't add enough. And widening East Blithdale, it's difficult, you've got the creek, you've got the hillside there. Whatever we would do, that would be easily expensive. We've got, that's not to say we couldn't do it, but it's something that would need to be studied. Caltrans has added ramp meterings, so the northbound ramp, as you've noticed recently, has the two lanes there, so we have increased storage for cars going forward there. We just need to continue to chip away at it. It's not something that we're going to be able to solve with a silver bullet.
Thank you. Tricia?
So Sasha's right, there is no silver bullet on traffic. When I decided on, everybody said to me, stay away from traffic. It is tough, it is something every council's had to deal with, and yet we haven't had a true solution yet, so there's no silver bullet. I'm very much for the school bus project, if that'll help. I believe in getting people out of their cars, getting them walking, getting them on their bikes. I've heard and read about a proposal for a type of shuttle within town. It's a natural triangle from, from, Tam High is downtown, and back down to East Blithdale. So that's an idea I think we should look more into, that work. Roundabouts, Urban's right, roundabouts work. I'm sure many of you have traveled to other places in the world where this works beautifully, you know, in England and Ireland, and, well, Berkeley for that matter, kind of in the world. It works well there, too. So my goal is to try and get more people out. And I go back to muscle memory. If people are using their SLPs for their everyday lives, when it comes to an emergency or evacuation, they'll already know their routes around town on foot or on bike.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question will be answered by Urban first. Do short-term rentals such as Airbnb and VRBO remove long-term rentals, reduce housing supply, and limit affordable housing? Does Mill Valley have proper controls?
Yeah, so good question. So the planning question that I share has put in, we actually wrote an Affordable Accessory Growing Unit Ordinance two years ago, and in that Accessory Growing Unit Ordinance, we put in provisions for low to moderate income rental, and also provided a density bonus to households for putting these things in. One of the things we did was to exclude short-term rentals, less than 30 days, because it does remove the housing stock. And so it does make a material difference. That's what our research showed. So doing that made a big difference. And so, yes, so, I mean, that excluded is important. Also, I'll note that in the county, they allow short-term rentals, and this has been a problem for neighborhoods, because these homes get used by people that are not in our community for a very long period of time. They don't really care about noise, they don't really care about mess. And so it's really been a big problem for people in the county, a problem that we really haven't had to deal with in Mill Valley. So including that and extending that, I think, is an important part of how we manage our housing stock in Mill Valley. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the question, does it eat up housing stock? Yes, the short-term rentals do eat up housing stock. More to the question, are there proper controls in Mill Valley? And to that, I say, no, there are. The controls are voluntary, and people are complying, they are volunteering with the tax. But is that the solution? I personally, and I was just talking about this with Peter before coming up here, we have two homes in our neighborhood of, within the last five years, that have landlords that are not, they're absentee landlords, and purchases of properties here without any use of those homes, simply as investments, hurt our neighborhoods. And, you know, there's no solution to that. But those have been open to Airbnbs on an occasional basis, and it does hurt our neck of the woods.
Thank you. Sasha?
So again, I'm going to expand the frame. Short-term rentals, in the view of affordable housing, sounds like a real negative thing, but to someone who is house-rich and cash-cour, it could be the reason that they can stay in their home. So it's important for us to have short-term rentals as a vehicle for people to be able to stay in their homes. We do monitor compliance, and that we use a firm called Host Compliance that a lot of people use around the county, and it's been extremely effective. We, the people who have short-term rentals pay transient occupancy tax, and that contributes to the city. So I think short-term rentals are part of the mix. Do they affect long-term rentals? I think that it allows people to have that flexibility, it allows someone to have the ability to have, well, I'm going to have my, this spare room available for my son when he comes up from college, but if he, you know, while I'm waiting for him to come from college, I'm going to rent it out. So I think it's part of, it's part of the palette of things that are options that are available to homeowners, and I don't think we need to be unnecessarily restrictive of it.
Thank you. Tricia?
So I agree with Sasha on this. I think we should allow short-term rentals. I think there are examples of, if you have an extra room in your home, and one of our policemen who lives way out of the county wants a place to stay for a couple of nights a week, I think we should make areas build back. I think that should be included in it. It's very important. So many of our teachers, our first responders, and others that have homes outside, it would be great to allow them to be part of the short-term rental program. I know we do monitor it, and there is, as Sasha said, there's the taxes that come in from, for revenue for a city, so I would encourage that.
Thank you. Max?
Yeah, I'm with Sasha and Tricia on this. I think that for especially folks, as Sasha alluded to, who have a home, but maybe don't have a steady income, or are on a fixed income, renting out a room or a couple of rooms in their home while still living there is a solution to help them stay in Mill Valley. So it actually helps people continue to live in their homes and thrive in this community. And I think that we should encourage people to do that. I do think there is a real issue in West Marin, and obviously, we're running here for Mill Valley City Council, but when you're looking at the coastal communities, with all of the land restrictions in place there, where they can't build anymore, and there's not affordable housing, those communities really need steps to address. But I think in Mill Valley, we should encourage people to rent out their homes and be able to stay in Mill Valley. Thanks.
Thank you. This will be the last question of the series, so we'll start with Kurt. And the question is, what is your position on reopening the Alto Tunnel to provide a safe route between Mill Valley and the rest of Marin for bikes and pedestrians?
Easy answer. I just completed the MCBC of Marin County Bicycle Coalition questionnaire, and I'm one commuter of the year as a bicyclist going back and forth to San Francisco as a commuter, but don't hurt talk, I apologize. I think the cost and the restrictions and the, yeah, the answer is, simple answer is no on the tunnel. The simple answer is no. As a bicyclist, I go on the paths between Mill Valley and San Rafael, paralleling Highway 101, and it's a great corridor. The cost to our community, to our neighbors, and the cost overruns that will ensure, were insured to happen, if that were to come through the Alto Tunnel, would be a real, real fight here in Mill Valley, I see. My answer is no on the Alto Tunnel.
Thank you. Sasha?
I agree with that. I think it's a very, although it's a very nice idea, the, all the plans that I've seen are, it's extremely expensive, it would be extremely destabilizing to that neighborhood in Scott Valley. It's, I think there are other ways to skin that catch, and that are less painful to the community and less expensive.
Thank you. Tricia?
T D, I do believe that we should not open the tunnel. I've seen the studies, it's so expensive to do. I'd much rather see money spent to make a safer route over Camino Alto and the other side of that. It's too expensive, it's detrimental to the community, and my answer is no, I don't think we should open it, and just look for other ways.
Thank you. Max?
Yeah, my answer is yes, with the caveat that we do need to ensure that the expense comes down. I think that, you know, there is funding sources at the state and federal and regional level from MTC that might not be able to be used for other bike ped improvements in the community. And so we should go after those funds and look at partnering with a neighboring jurisdiction in Corred Madera, as well as the county, if and when we open up the Alto Tunnel. So it's something that I'm absolutely supportive of, but it's something that we have to address on the cost side.
Thank you. Urban?
Yeah, so Alto Tunnel is one of these issues that's been around a long time, and it's a really elegant potential solution, because it provides a way of integrating two different communities, the most direct route, it actually connects to the bike by itself, and provides a really easy way to get from one place to the next. The problem is that there's been so much opposition to it, and that really becomes a political hurdle. And also, there's a lot of costs associated with it, and there's also land ownership issues in terms of providing access to that area in order to actually complete the tunnel. So there are a lot of practical problems with it. I'd hate to see Alto Tunnel become kind of the wedge on this. What I'd like to see is these two communities integrate, because it's six miles from downtown Mill Valley to Larchburg Ferry and to the College of Marin. And I think integrating that area in one cohesive, you know, small city is important, and also integrating Mill Valley with, similarly with Tiburon and with Sausalito, so you can get from one place to another on bikes, is really, really important. And I'd hate to get that hung up going north by insisting that it goes through the Alto Tunnel. It might be that a simpler solution, that's less controversial, is the right way to go initially, and then work longer term towards getting the Alto Tunnel opened up, as a way of ultimately getting that resolved successfully. Max?
Thank you. This concludes the question board of the forum. Before the candidates make their closing statement, here's some useful information about the election. March 3rd is Election Day. Vote by mail ballots were mailed yesterday, February 3rd. Returned ballots must be postmarked. Returned ballots must be postmarked no later than March 3rd, and received at the election office no later than March 6th. Please note that Marin County pays the postage for all returned ballots. If you want to vote by mail ballot, you must request it by February 25th. Early voting is now open at the election office at the Civic Center. You can vote there in person, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Room 121. Now the candidates will be making closing statements at one minute, and we'll go in the reverse order, starting with Max, and then coming this direction on the table. Max?
Well, thank you, Susan, and thank you to the Rotary for having us. It's my honor to ask for your vote, and it's been an absolute pleasure running and talking about the issues that I care about. The three key issues that I've identified are climate change and preserving our environment, number one, emergency preparedness and evacuation planning, number two, and supporting our local small businesses. I'm supported in this race by Congressmember Jared Huffman, State Senator Mike McGuire, and over 30 current and former elected officials from around Marin, including in Mill Valley. We have an opportunity here to set a new path. We have a new city manager coming on board in June. We have a new council coming in with at least two new members, and I think with a fresh perspective, we can address a lot of the issues we've talked about today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tricia?
So one of the most important decisions that this new council will have to make is the city manager. This is critical for so many reasons. The council can hire the city manager, and it's the attorney, but it's the city manager's responsibility to hire the department heads. And we have a few very important ones open right now, including departments and rec. So I think that's very important. So I want to address that. As we talked about, infrastructure is extremely important. I have been endorsed by the Police Officers Association, the Mill Valley and Marin Firefighters Association, and the Women's Political Action Committee. So I very much look forward, if you vote for me, to working alongside my fellow council members. Thank you.
This is a, is that working? Yeah. This is a, this is a race where experience matters. We're having, we're in a leadership transition right now. Stephanie and Jessica are cycling up the council. These are two strong women that bring a lot to the table. And in the next two years, John and Jim will also cycle up. We will have a new city manager. So having experienced someone who understands how the city works, who knows all the departments, who understands the budget, who has connections in the community, this is going to be really important. And as the only incumbent city before you, I hope to have the opportunity to take us through that leadership ten, transition over the next four years. As we hire the new city manager, one of the most important things is getting that person plugged into the community. So it's not just hiring the right person, but making sure that person can be successful. And this, again, is where I think experience is going to be really valuable. So I'm asking for your vote. I hope to receive your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you. And Sashi says, leadership managers, and, and I'd be proud to serve Mill Valley, and I ask you for your vote. I'm also very proud of my endorsements and the two, the two biggest, or the Sierra Club, and something very true to me here in Mill Valley is the Mill Valley Community Action Network, people who are involved and taking action here in our community. The biggest endorsement, and I'll, I'll end on her words, not mine, which win or lose this election, it means so much to me. Where we live, how we live, and how we can express our commitment to democracy is right here at the local level, and here is where our support and vote can make a difference. Kirk Nowra has the experience to analyze, critique, and do the math. Many years ago, Kirk and his family, and wife, three kids and a dog, bought a landmark tiny cottage surrounded by public lands above Old Mill Creek. He and his family know how to walk, the talk, authentic, true to himself, as well as to the environment. He reminds us of the privilege of simply living here in Mill Valley. We need a bright light of honesty and vision, strength of character, not beholden to dialogues, developers, activists, or one pony interests, but someone who knows and cares about us, one of our own.
Thank you. Urban?
Hi, thank you. So my profile is very different than the other people that are on stage here with me. I'm the only person that's served on the planning commission, I'm the current chair of the planning commission. I've been on it for four years. I'm the only one that's run a 501(c) in Mill Valley, and I did that for almost 10 years. I'm the only one with experience with our library. I spent six years on the site council for our school system. I was the president of the school system site council. I spent 10 years with the soccer club, seven years as a commissioner running it. I've got 20 years of experience running things in Mill Valley. I've got a 35-year business career. Finance, as you heard, is going to be a big issue coming up in the next 10 years. I have a degree in finance and economics from the Wharton School, which, before Donald Trump, had a good reputation. And I've been endorsed by 19 former mayors and a host of other people in Mill Valley. So I've got the deep support of the community. I've got a lot of experience. Leadership does matter. Leadership in Mill Valley is what matters, not leadership outside of Mill Valley, and it's leadership here. And I feel like I've got that. So I look forward to this election, and I look forward to having your support, and I look forward to hopefully leading Mill Valley into the new decade. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our forum. Thank you to CMCM for recording this event. It will be rebroadcast on Channel 30 and posted on YouTube. The YouTube link will be available at the league's website. Thank you to the Mill Valley Rotary Club for hosting this event, and to the Mill Valley Community Center for making the space available. And thanks to the candidates for participating, and to Nancy Bell for timekeeping, Linda Sula and Nancy Weber for question sorting, and to you, the voters, for joining us today, and most importantly, for voting. Thank you.
That's it. I love it. Applause.[1781.23]